Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Bradenton City Council Meeting, Wednesday, May 24th, 2023, at 8:30 a.m. at City Hall. At this time, we'll call Father Richard Viscotti from Christ Episcopal Church to come up and do our invocation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Oh God, you have been our help in ages past, and by faith, we set our hope in you. We come together at this time to consider the needs of the community in which we are privileged to serve. We ask your guidance and direction so that in our gathering on this day, we may act responsibly and justly in all matters before us. Help us to plan wisely and to allocate our resources prudently with charitable hearts. This Monday, we also remember and give thanks for all those men and women who loved our country more than life. Let us do our part here in Bradenton to carry on the hopes and the dreams of those who gave their lives for the values that we uphold. We ask this all in your most precious name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Join us in the pledge? A pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America-
And to the republic for which it stands-
One nation, under God-
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk?
We have one proclamation today, Wear Orange Day, that I will read on behalf of the mayor. Whereas Wear Orange Day is an opportunity to unite and honor the communities shattered by gun violence, including the families that have tragically lost their loved ones. And whereas in 2013, Hadia Pendleton, a Chicago teen, was killed shortly after marching in the presidential inaugural parade, her friends and family gathered together and made the decision to commemorate her life by wearing orange, the color hunters wear to protect themselves. Whereas Wear Orange is a national movement in its ninth year of bringing people together to fight for a future free of gun violence. And whereas the city supports all efforts to educate the community on safe gun training, usage, and storage. And whereas Wear Orange Day continues to highlight the need for all citizens and community leaders to continue in their efforts to make our city a safe and healthy community for all. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Jean Brown, as the mayor of the city of Bradenton, Florida, do hereby proclaim June 2nd, 2023, as Wear Orange Day in Bradenton, and urges all citizens to participate by remembering the lives that have been lost and the many that continue to be wounded daily. Signed, Jean Brown, Mayor.
Thank you. Who do we have to come forward and accept this? Why don't we get everybody that has orange on to come up?
Thank you, Mayor Brown and council members. My name is Virginia McCallum, and I am a member of one of the 18 organizations who joined us in requesting this proclamation. And if it's okay, I'd like to just note these organizations. Also Youth, Bradenton Alumni Chapter, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc., Brady Sarasota, First Congregational United Church of Christ, League of Women Voters Manatee, League of Women Voters Sarasota, Manatee Unitarian Universalist Fellowship, Modern Marimba, Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America, Minnesota, NAACP Manatee, Newtown Nation, The Peace and Education in Action Center, Queens of Domestic Violence Awareness, Resilient Retreat, Recess Education, Streets of Paradise, the Manassota Reentry Project, and Women's Voices of Southwest Florida. So we receive this proclamation in honor of survivors, victims, and all of those affected by gun violence, including the almost 3,000 Floridians who die by gunfire annually, with 62% of them being suicides. We know that gun violence is preventable, and we can work to make our community safer. We're asking everyone to wear orange on Friday, June 2nd, and encourage your loved ones to do the same as we honor gun violence victims and spread awareness about safety and prevention. Thank you so much for recognizing gun violence awareness day.
Thank you. All right. Before we move on, I'll just make a little bit of a statement. Lisa and I and Scott, Scott's not here today, but if any of you need to borrow any orange for that day, we probably have some.
Oh, I have a lot of retro Buccaneer stuff, so you can keep your stuff, sir.
There's some rattlers in my family. I got some orange.
I don't get much with this FSU group up here anymore. No, and that's important, not making light of that, but it's important that, you know, we symbolize what can be done and what can continue to do to protect people and that. So thank you. All right, moving on.
Our first presentation is by Bradenton Fire Department Employee Recognition.
Chief?
Tim Gier, Fire Chief. I'm going to ask all uniformed personnel to come up and join me at the podium, along with Steve Tromke and his family. We'll go ahead and get everybody moving up this way a little bit quicker. We're here to recognize Steve Tromke Battalion Chief with the city of Bradenton. He's decided to retire and hang up the hat after 26 years of service. So he made the full pull. Steve has been on thousands of incidents, not only in the city, but across the state, including Hurricane Katrina back in the day, early in our development of our technical rescue program. He's a founding member. Steve also, many don't know, but Steve was an integral part of the development of the Fire Academy at the MTC campus. And the campus, early on in its development, was at our Fire Station 3, and many don't even know that, but that's how small it started out, and it developed into what it is today. And his 20 years plus at MTC has also developed the program, and many firefighters that we have working with us today across the state and across the country.
23?
So.
23.
So anyways, a lot of years. And, you know, we always used to, you know, I used to joke around with the recruits on how one day they could end up being our chief, you know, and we've had some really close calls. So, you know, the fire service, the fire service is what you put into it, and Steve's a testament to it. And you can't, he can't go anywhere without running into somebody he's probably taught and influenced in a positive way. Steve has been a fire commissioner for the fire, Parish Fire District, another one of his top-secret things that he likes to keep hidden. Steve is, you know, speaking of guns and gun control, Steve is an avid shooter with trap and skeet and has represented the department, the firefighter Olympics through the years, and he comes out winning gold, I'd say, near 100% of the time. So, you know, he and his team, you know, you have to, you have to be dialed in to be part of his crew. Steve's family now has always been his focus, and it's evident, you know, with his wife and daughters that are here today, and it's always been his focus. It's great to know that Steve has an identity outside of the fire service, and I think y'all are proof of that. And his wife Tammy and daughters have always supported him through everything we've asked in his important job as battalion chief. One thing that Steve always has done is answer his phone. He has always told me that, "I'll always answer my phone." And he is spot on with that. The most dependable guy you'll ever know. He puts others first, and he definitely gives more than he gets in return, and that's hard to find. So, true friend, true fire department brother, and he'll be missed. And, you know, the incidents that he's been part of here in the city are just, you know, incredible. And Steve has that mind that he can fix anything, he can build anything. He's one of our people where if he sees it isn't right, he can pretty much identify it by looking at it, including plans, and then he'll call somebody to verify it. So, very detailed and meticulous in everything he's ever done. So, you have anything you want to add? I love putting people on the spot, but I'm going to give Steve, I'd love to hear Steve, you know, just say a few words if you would like.
A few words? Well, first, Mayor, Council, you know, Rob, just, you know, a dream come true that...
This was me yesterday, by the way. I didn't think I was going to be able to make it through today.
You know, it's just something I always wanted to do, and I can say I did it now. In 26 years, and it was a pleasure serving the city.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for always being there when our citizens needed you. And to your family, thank you for sharing him with us. I know we missed probably a lot of birthdays and special days, but no, your husband and your dad is a hero. Thank you.
Mr. Kramer?
Go ahead, Chief. Go ahead, Chief. I'll go right ahead. I'm sorry. Well, Steve, I gave Mary Ann my tissues, so I'm not going to cry. But I jokingly said to your family, "Sorry, now you get to have them all the time," but I'm very happy, I'm very happy that you've gotten to this point. The finish line is, you know, you think about it all those years, and you finally got to it, so now you all get to enjoy the time together. Congratulations.
Mr. Perry?
Just briefly. Commander Tromke was one of the first people I met here. Chuck Edwards took me over, and we were over at Station 1, as I remember. And it became, it became evident early on why the culture and the commitment of this department is so deeply rooted and so service-oriented. And Steve expressed that. It took me literally probably three minutes to figure out that we have a department that takes that culture and that commitment very seriously, that there's a long legacy history of it, and there's people like, like Steve that are attributable to making that culture. And it's one of the finest departments, I've worked in public safety business for a long time, that I've ever worked with, and it's because of the organizational culture, and moreover, people like Steve and his family. So thank you to you and your family. Yep.
Thank you. So Saturday night, obviously, we had a little bit of a fire, I believe it was Saturday night, and, you know, I stopped by as they had got the fire out. And it was in a storage unit area, so, you know, there wasn't maybe a lot of life part of it that bit, but when I was looking at the way the firefighters were cleaning up and they were trying to get done, and that heat and all of that effort, you looked at, you know, and it's what the training that they had to make sure that they were safe, that obviously the fire was put out correctly and all of that. And without, like, your 26 years of doing that and hearing what you've done through the training and that, it would, you know, firefighters would have been in danger. So not only from what you did from the beginning, but also what you've done for the training over the years, I think, is going to be missed, but it's also still going to be there and go on forever. So, you know, it's not the end. It's the end of this part, and, you know, there's a lot more years, and we strive to get to it. And we were talking the other day, I have a two-month-old grandbaby, and we can't wait till she walks. But then when she starts walking, we don't want her to be walking, so don't think this is the end, this is just the beginning, and enjoy that. But think of those things and how that, what you've done to put the younger people in a good place, and that's, that's what life's about, helping the younger people. So thank you for what you've done, and as I always say, don't be a stranger. You can come and sit here and watch us, you know, if you want to, or don't, so.
Get a picture, maybe?
Yep, yeah, we'll get all up here and council back here, so thank you.
Chief, if you could get our men and women a V, shoulder-to-shoulder at 45, so we get a nice wide-angle, tight shot.
I'll wave back here.
Thanks to ME TV and Richard for that photograph they took back there, too.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Next, we have a presentation on Mixon Grove's acquisition opportunity by Charlie Hunsicker.
Thank you. Welcome.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and council members, and City Minister Perry. It's an honor to follow that presentation and recognition of your battalion chief, you know, with the fire service. I'm sure with, like many of us, his community service will continue on past, well past retirement. And it's a pleasure to have witnessed that, and thank you for letting us, giving us the honor of following that and making this presentation to you today. My name's Charlie Hunsicker, and I'm the Director of Natural Resources with Manatee County Government. And with me today is Deborah Childsworth, who is our Environmental Lands Division Manager with our department. Both of us and many others in our department, and in conjunction with our county administrator and our Board of County Commissioners, work very hard to implement a referendum that city and county residents voted for not, but two years ago, it seems like forever, or like yesterday, perhaps, in contrast. But that referendum was, gave us the ability, gave you the ability, as Manatee County residents as well, to participate in shaping and framing our future. Our future for land acquisitions that attempt to find and restore and obtain a balance between our developing county, development within your cities, and the necessity to keep what I would describe as that perfect recipe between conservation lands, lands for water quality and environmental protection, and lands where we live. You know, we're sometimes the important species on the planet, and we have to take care of ourselves and find the land that accommodies us and our roads and our places of worship and where we live. But there's also the unspoken and unspoken natural resources that also are there to support us and protect us. So we will have the opportunity in the coming years with this referendum to pursue additional places that are important to us. Much like our history with Robinson Preserve that you may know of, or Emerson Point, in addition to those larger places, there are very special places also that we find that brings solace. They don't have to be thousands of acres, they can be very small parks, much like your Riverwalk East Extension at Menlo Springs. We had the privilege of being near there when you had your dedication, and it's a beautiful place, found within the city, and a place of retreat. So we have the opportunity today to talk to you about a similar opportunity, an opportunity that has been established that will carry forward the legacy of almost, I might say, a pioneer family for Florida agriculture and Florida citrus, the Mixon family and the Mixon Farms that they have protected through generations. So we want to talk about today a little bit about the values of that property and introduce you to the topics and priorities that we will carry as we work to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners that this property be acquired for its special values and purposes. So I'd like to introduce Deborah, Deborah Childsworth to review some of those special purposes, and again, give you a little history and background of how we got here today, again with your support. For all of you who voted for the referendum, I thank you, and I will be thanking you for years to come. So, Deborah.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm very glad to be here today. There's a drawer. I believe for a mouse. My primary will is to implement the referendum that 72% of us, Manatee County voters, approved for conservation and parks projects. And fortunately, I wasn't starting from scratch. There's a long history in Manatee County of Environmental Lands Management and Acquisition Ordinance that was established in 1993. It's been updated several times over the years. There were clearly established processes, criteria for prioritizing conservation lands, and also an advisory board that has actually grown to 17 members now, appointed by the commission. And most recently, the Board of County Commissioners authorized this ordinance and advisory board to implement the referendum. Now, we look back to the language that was actually on the ballot because we want to check all the boxes of what the voters were looking for with this, or what they expected to get. And it's pretty clear, there's protecting drinking water sources, protecting water quality, preserving fish and wildlife habitat, and also preventing stormwater runoff pollution and providing parks. Now, the preventing stormwater runoff pollution, there's a lot of ways we do that, and so we look a little more closely at that for some interpretation and direction as we move forward in spending these very precious funds. Now, the funds, it's .15 millage per year, which can generate about $7 million, we're anticipating. This is the first year it's actually been implemented, and it gives the commission an opportunity to bond up to $50 million with repayment in 20 years. So of course, if all of our lands could be purchased with just what the millage generates, we wouldn't need to bond, but if, you know, if we exceed what accumulates, then there's an opportunity to bond. So with, so for stormwater, you know, there's, there's a traditional part of developing that treats stormwater. We don't see that as part of this special funding. But taking the opportunity to restore areas that aren't vegetated to prevent runoff or even take a channelized stream, you know, restore that stream so that you have the sinuous nature, water stays on-site longer, it sinks into the ground, it gets treated by native vegetation, and the nutrient load is reduced and so on. So that's an opportunity we see here. Now, the funds for the engineering solutions, the concrete, the steel, some of those types of things, are really not what we see as being a part of this. However, there can always be funds from outside that can be used in partnerships. Let's see, there's a map that I'm missing here. All right, so there, my apologies, there's a map that didn't make it into this updated presentation, but the Mixon property, let me scooch onto that. All right, so you see that the Mixon property is this pink parcel right here, and the city boundary is surrounding it, literally, on three sides. So you have city to the north of Mixon, city of Bradenton to the west of Mixon, and also city of Bradenton to the south. So we're very intermingled here with our county and our city. So the Mixon Fruit Farms was actually nominated by someone outside the county as a stormwater park, and that was Damon Moore, and he's here today. I think he's going to take an opportunity to speak with you. He used to be the Manatee County Ecological and Marine Services Director, so he has a very successful history of preserving and restoring our natural resources for water quality and fisheries and also public use. So when a property is nominated, we look carefully at all the criteria. Our four main criteria that we look at, ecological quality, for a place like Mixon Fruit Farms, it's been in citrus for many years, actually very low. You know, we're not seeing a lot of that native habitat. For the rarity of species, also low, because, you know, for many years, it's been a fruit farm. And the connectivity of other natural conservation areas, also low. However, the importance to water resources is so high, and it's critical, you know, that we protect and restore those as our county continues to develop. So there are 1,500 feet along Glen Creek, and that gives us the potential to improve water quality and to also reduce flooding in the area. You know, we have documented flooding to the upstream and downstream of the area, and I know there, there's a lot of thought going into how to resolve that. This property could be one of those pieces that could be used for that. We also look specifically at the language in the referendum. Drinking water, not as much because it's not on a reservoir, but we do have the water quality protection, stormwater runoff pollution, preservation of fish habitat, wildlife habitat, and the provision of parks. You'll see in a couple more slides, a proposed restoration plan that involves improving fish habitat. That might seem like a little bit of a stretch right here at this slide because it's not directly connected to the river, but there is an opportunity there. And most importantly, with our Environmental Lands Program, is that we have willing sellers. It is a willing seller program, and when we reached out to the Mixons and talked to them about this opportunity, they were thrilled to hear it. They were thrilled to hear that what they have, the land they attended, and all the different opportunities that they provided to the community over so many years could be continued, and they would prefer to see that. Even understanding that the appraised value that would be coming from the Manatee County Conservation Lands Program would be lower likely than they're going to get from, be offered from a developer. Development would wipe out all those resources. And so this gives us an opportunity to do so many things with the property. We can take advantage of a lot that's on-site. Now, the southwest corner, as you probably know, there's a large warehouse where their cafe and their gift shop is, and it's been used by CityServe through a local church to warehouse furniture and other household items that are held until a family in need is identified, and then they provide those resources to them. I think they'll probably talk a little bit more about that today, but they're interested in buying the entire warehouse and about the three to four acres that surround it to expand on what they're doing now. And we've been working on how we might share those boundaries, you know, between the parking area and the natural area around it. There's also playgrounds that could be continued, there are tram tours, field trips, summer camps, that is something that Manatee County is interested in continuing if we have an opportunity. There's also a wildlife rescue on-site, and we've talked to them about what their intentions for the future are, what their dreams are, and they're developing a business plan that they're going to share with us, and we'll see if we have an opportunity to support each other in continuing that. So they go out and they rescue wildlife, capture snakes, things like that, and they hold them. If they can't be released, they keep them on-site, and then that provides an opportunity for anyone in the community to learn about them and even interact with them. I don't know how many of you have the opportunity to hold one of those cute little baby alligators with the tape around their snouts, but it's actually pretty cool. So, moving on to what some of our thoughts and our proposed uses are, I'll give it back to Charlie. Thank you.
I need your help on the slides. Well, you know, there you have it. I mean, the family, over the years, has found other opportunities to expand their services beyond retail sales, all the way through a very, a very solid wedding venue that is a great location for that special day in your life, along with the summer camps that many kids have grown up with, almost across generations, coming to the farm. And along with the other values of just being able to learn a little bit about the history of citrus, they've expanded- they've expanded now into, into bamboo, which is a, not only is it a crop, but it now serves in, in a way as a retreat. These are the things that, if acquired, the county would certainly want to continue. Because the, the Mixon Farms has gone well beyond its, its original agricultural provisions to now providing the kind of parks and services for the community. And it, in, in the location that it's at, these services will be able to continue and, and again, delight the kids and the parents who bring them forever if we can manage to accomplish and acquisition the program. The, the property, as situated on Glen Creek, also gives us a number of opportunities for stormwater protection, stormwater quality improvements, and a little measure of flood protection as well. On that map, that's on the, on the screen in front of you, some of the ideas that we've got, and these are very conceptual, include, as Deborah mentioned, the continuation of the, what I call the, the small zoo at the location, great location. And an opportunity to rebuild some of the environments that we, that we know were present at the turn of the century. And, and also to take a look at Glen Creek, which was channelized to take care of the flooding in that community, and, and take a special opportunity to widen that creek and, and give it the kind of slope and, and outfalls that allow our rising water levels that will touch Manatee River and the Braden River that will flow up into Glen Creek in what we call a marsh mitigation corridor. Believe it or not, mitigate, not mitigation, marsh, a marsh migration corridor. So that as water levels rise, the marsh features are not drowned, they simply walk up slope. And these are the techniques that we've employed in some of our other coastal preserves, keeping them very flat, knowing that you'll have a certain edge community right there at the waterline, as the waterline rises, that environmental community can just move right up slope. That opportunity exists here at, at Mixon as well, to continue to provide the water quality services that, that will be there for decades to come. In speaking with your public works group, I've played golf at the River Run many years. Had a lot of success and a, and a lot of lessons learned about how bad a golfer I am. But River Run is, is a great place, but it's missing the driving range. Sorry to have my back to you here. It's missing a, yeah, here we go. Missing a driving range. And if the property is situated adjacent to the golf course with a short golf court, golf cart ride, we could provide a location for the city to develop that, that netted, netted in facility. If you've ever driven out El Conquistador Boulevard and driven by the IMG facility, you'll see that they have a golf range right there along the road, protected by netting. Something like that could be included here as well, to add to the amenities of the golf course itself. So these are, that's what's called, it's a draft concept map, it's a work in progress. We hope to be able to initiate a appraisal of the property very soon. Our Board of County Commissioners have authorized that we move forward on this property to do what we would describe as preliminary due diligence. We've, we're going to be working through the national estuary programs to see if we can get a grant to help us do the design and the permitting of a stormwater feature that would be implemented here, along with some help from my colleagues in the Public Works Department in Manatee County. We hope to be able to start construction of those stormwater facilities. So timeline, for us, it's unfortunately a long time. Appraisals, negotiations, concepts of development and permitting. It could be as much as eighteen months before we're ready to recommend to the board or that the board take, be able to take action to set aside the funding to meet the Mixons' family price. But that is a, that is a, a trail and a process we look forward to following. We're optimistic and we're hopeful that Manatee County can in fact close to preserve, protect, and provide the continuing community services that this property provides us today. So, are there questions?
Alright, I'll just kind of make a couple of comments and statements here from, from my standpoint. First off, Charlie, I want to thank you for your decades of service to our community with what you do for the, the conservative part and trying to really look at angles, options, public-private partnerships and everything we've done. Because it's important to have a steward like you in that seat for, for the citizens of our community. So thank you from, from that standpoint of, of my personal part and, and all the years. And then also going to the Mixons on this part, we obviously know that the tradition and the history of what they've done generationally in our community. And, and my grandkids are, were mad we weren't going to get that ice cream anymore, which was a change that they had to make, but then we heard there's going to be an ice cream truck, so food truck. So that was exciting to hear and, and I was promised that it would come to the city hall first to, to do that. So we're going to, we're going to get that up front. But, but no, I think this is a great opportunity, as you said, to, to kind of look forward, see what can happen and, and what amenities, what public-private partnerships, what we can do. And with that referendum with the citizens of the county, including the municipalities who are a part of it, and we believe that in the city of Bradenton, there's about three-quarters of a million dollars of that seven million that is what comes from city residents. So I think it's an opportunity for that funds also to be tied in with how it works. And as you said, it's early, so from, and, and I thought when you came to me that day and said, can we put this on there, I thought it was important to get it started now for us. So we can follow that path with the, the Board of County Commissioners and, and see how we can be involved and, and how we can process through while working with a public-private partnership to get things done. So we're excited that opportunity is there. It doesn't always come where it's connected to us, so that's, that's how it brings us into it and around it. And I think that would be a great amenity because we've always talked about how important our golf course is. And though, looking at what opportunities for the golf course growth in the future is, well, this kind of may be that opportunity to do a couple different ways while still engaging the conservative part of that land. So thank you for that and I'll open up to any council members that would want to ask any questions or will just keep going down the path of where we are and, and keep the, keep the lines of communication open and, and very excited to the direction it's going. Thank you, yes ma'am.
Ward five is kind of what surrounds you. And this is exciting to hear of a, a way to conserve our natural, you know, habitats and so forth. So this is interesting and I'm looking forward to seeing where, where you go with this and.
Thank you so much.
Alright, we appreciate, oh, you have something?
Well, I just was going to say that it, it looks like it could be a great addition to the community. And you've got a real history of great vision and brought some great things to our community. So I'm anxious to see how this progresses.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Alright, we appreciate it, look forward to many updates. Thank you. Alright, moving on, we're coming up on citizen comment. And it will be accepted during the citizen comment portion of the meeting on any non-agenda items, agenda items, future agenda items or topic of relevance to the city. Comments will be accepted on public hearings at the appropriate time. And you will have three minutes, and when you come forward, please state your name and address for the record. And you'll have three minutes. At this time, our first one to call is Bill Sanders, and it talks about consent agenda.
Bill Sanders, twenty-five oh-two Riverside Drive. I have two items, one is on a consent and one is on this.
I'll call that at the moment.
You'll call that the consent later?
Yeah.
Okay.
Consent is now and then the other one would be.
Consent is now and then I want to speak about this, this presentation.
You'll get a separate time for that.
Okay, thank you, so I'll, I'll talk about the consent. On the consent agenda, which is a, a problem with me that it's on a consent agenda, we're moving about six million dollars, not about, it's probably a little more, from the CRA to the city coffers. And I don't think it's being put in restricted funds. These funds that come through TIF are mandatorily taxed through the taxpayers to remove slum and blight, affordable housing, to improve the neighborhoods. And primarily, that's neighborhoods, probably three, Josh yours, and five. Four was there. I think I pretty much got a handle on that before I left. One and two has never been in that, they're not in that. So you're, you're hurting wards three and five primarily because these funds now are not restricted, they're not put in the proper protocol for affordable housing and removing slum and blight. And recently, you have funded the, what I call the wash and wax of downtown, which these funds through DDA before were used for the downtown. The downtown needs no more help. The downtown is a shining star now. At one time, it did need help. But we have donated a lot of money through the CRA to downtown with streetscapes, four or five million dollars and lots of other things. So it's time to actually move away from downtown and move into the neighborhoods of three and five with this affordable housing. So please, you know, I don't see anything illegal about putting this, but Mr. Perry, you've threatened to, to do this and you're accomplishing your task of moving these funds to the city coffers that put that in your control. And I'm asking that you, that this board vote this down unless it's restricted funds to be used only for those two categories I just mentioned and to soften what we're doing downtown because we're, we're spending money in the wrong area. And Ward five and Ward three are suffering, that's down Fourteenth Street. We see it, 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 it's, it's still, it got a lot of work to do. Ward five has an enormous amount of work to do. Probably, you might be able to use, if you ask, some of this six million dollars to buy this Mixon Farms as a park.
Thank you, sir.
Because this city is built on a park.
Janet Mixon. Welcome. You bringing a sidekick with you?
Yeah. He kind of follows.
Follows you around.
We are, want to address the purchase of our property. And it's been a heartbreaking thing for us to even think about the sale, sale of this. But between NAFTA, with all the diseases and lack of, in trying to get people to work, our insurance on stuff, it's, it's been a tough several years. But our goal has been about making memories. And there's hardly anybody in this town that doesn't have some kind of a memory of Mixon Farms. And our, our dream would be to continue that, to make it something that, that their grandchildren and your, your kids can keep coming. My background, I'm a doc, I have my doctorate in education. And from the very beginning, when, when we got married, it was about changing this so kids could learn. Dean and I were actually in kindergarten together at Manatee Elementary. And I was one of their youngest workers. I would ride the bus home with him and, and we were the kumquat putters. We put kumquats on top of all the boxes. So we have a lot of memories. And so part of why we wanted to do this is because there are memories here. And like the bamboo, our bamboo, it's got massive amounts of negative ions. And, and it's something that we couldn't do personally, but with, working with you all, negative ions is a relaxing thing. It's something where kids that are having trouble, if you have a class that sits in the bamboo, you can feel it when you, when you walk in. If any of you want to come, I'll take you out there, you feel it when you walk in. It's, it's a stress reliever. And so there's all kinds of things that we can do on the property. A community garden, continue with the field trips and the, and the play area. The, the wedding area is, could be a income. We get about sixty-five hundred dollars just for renting the, the facility. That can be something that continues. And I would love to help with planning some classes and camps and stuff to continue some of this stuff. We're, we're old, oh gosh, I'm, okay.
Giving her three minutes is like. I just, I just want to remind the, the council that we've been friends of the city for a long time. Your reclaim order line comes, came through our property back when we owned all the property over at Dropacana. And we still have that one part of it and the big tank is on the corner. So we've been willing to work with the, with the city as much as possible throughout the years. And I'll remind Ms. Barnaby about her I Love Lucy.
I tell people about that all the time. You guys probably don't know, but.
But I just want to thank you for your consideration and, and what we can do there.
Thank you. Calling Angie Moore. Welcome, please state your name and address for the record.
Good morning, my name is Angie Moore, address is fifteen eight-hundred, I had to look, I don't use it very often, East State Route sixty-four. Good morning, mayor and councilman. My name is Angie and I'm one of the directors at Bayside Community Church. I'm here along with EJ Liggins, Director of City Serve. And as you heard, we are interested in continuing the use of that warehouse property on the Mixon Fruit Farms. Thank you for this opportunity to share just for a moment on the impact that Mixon Fruit Farms Warehouse has made on our community through Bayside. For the past two years, Bayside has used the Mixons Warehouse for a community outreach named City Serve. The mission of City Serve is to distribute resources into the local community and to other churches in order to directly support individuals and families in need. Bayside has used this as a nonprofit volunteer ministry and we receive new and used, unused items, let me clarify, new unused items from Amazon and other big box retailers. These are items that they have no use for, maybe they've overbought, things like that. They come to our warehouse and we distribute them at the appropriate time when there are families in our community that are having need. In this past year alone, more than three thousand individuals have received goods in kind and that amounts to more than seven hundred and forty-two thousand dollars worth of items distributed out just in Manatee County alone. For this outreach, we have been using fifteen thousand square feet of the warehouse and we need all sixty thousand square feet as we continue to grow. We understand that the county is considering the Mixon property for a park and community outreach, as well as many other things that you heard about this morning. We, as Bayside Community Church, are interested in purchasing the entire four acres on the corner of Twenty-sixth Avenue and Twenty-seventh Street from the Mixons directly. We understand that it has, it needs some repairs, it needs a new roof, and we are willing to take that on to continue to serve our community through the City Serve outreach and to also help preserve the Mixon legacy in our community. By the county purchasing the property on the corner, we will continue that legacy. And I know for myself, I remember taking a field trip to the Mixon Fruit Farms. I remember my first taste of the ice cream and I remember introducing that to my kids. So I look forward to us being able to continue to share in the community outreach that they have provided and memories. And we will do so by providing for some of those that are in the most vulnerable needs in our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it. Next, we have Bill Sanders, and this is on the, for Mixon and the consent. So just the Mixon, I guess, because you already did consent.
Thank you, Bill Sanders, twenty-five oh-two Riverside Drive. I want to thank the Mixons for showing here today. It shows to me that they are good community leaders and residents that they have offered this to the county and to the city. And opposed to a, a greedier situation that they could do was to sell it to development. I think that shows a good stewardship of the land. And I know Mr. Mixon's at one time had about three hundred acres there. And he has worked with the county and et cetera to, to do things in that area. I'm going to miss Mixons dramatically because I live real close to there. So I appreciate that, I want that extended to them, that I'm in support of this. And the city of Bradenton sold about two hundred acres a few years ago to development. Several hundred houses there just south of where the Mixons is. That was, we received ten and a half million dollars. So that, that, most of that funding, I believe, is still in the city coffers or reserves. I'd propose that you use that to buy this property with the subsidies that are offered through the tax increments from the county in, in this referendum that was passed by seventy-two percent. Or use the six million dollars that you've proposed to send over to the city coffers. You know, that would be a big hit in Ward five. It would also shore up the boundary lines, which is jagged as can be. And we have a hundred and eighty acres there with a, a, a city golf course. So it would be very nice to have a driving range or just leave it bare and land. It would increase our parks to over two hundred and some odd acres in that area. It would capture it and keep it out of development, which we've got more development in that area than we need. We don't have services to. We don't have services to take on anymore and we're struggling now with, with traffic. So I'm proposing that you take that ten and a half million dollars, add the subsidies with it, make the purchase as soon as possible and don't have to wait eighteen months. I think you can do that in probably one meeting. And if you'd like to discuss it, it'd be fine, but put it out to the public to come in and discuss it with us because this is important and it's, this, once it's gone, it's gone. And once it's in the city, it's ours unless we decide to, to develop it. And I think there should be language in that agreement that it should never be reverted back to anything other than a park. And we're selling City Hall and it's built on a park, Talent Park. And we've not discussed this at length of how we're gonna replace this, but we're mandatory by our comprehensive plan to replace it. That would be a good gesture, uh, council. That would be a very good gesture if you really wanted to sell City Hall. And I'm not opposed to selling City Hall. I'm opposed to the way we've, we've, we've done it. And I'm opposed to the, the funding that we don't have to replace it. Thank you.
Good morning, please state your name and address for the record and you have three minutes.
Good morning, my name is Damon Moore. My address is seven oh two Sundance Trail. Um, I'm here to speak to you all today in support of the, the Mixon property um, for several reasons that you've already heard, but maybe a little bit more detail and a little bit more passion from my part. As Charlie mentioned, I was the one that nominated this. I had um, been working at the county for years and when the Restore Act funding came up, um, we kinda looked for areas where we could make really impactful stormwater enhancement projects. We saw that basin as a great opportunity to treat stormwater runoff that came from areas of Tropicana that were developed before modern stormwater treatment requirements. So that's a, that's a major opportunity here to be able to, to pull that back and improve water quality and that's an opportunity that's kinda harder and harder to find that takes land to do. So, but more in general and somewhat more on a personal level as a, as a guy who grew up here, um, this is, as you guys have heard, um, this is a preservation of a cultural asset. Um, this is like, I, I know, like they, they sponsored our Little League teams at, at Manatee East and um, stopping by to get the orange ice cream was always something that we looked forward to. Um, but you know, from, from my background, this is something that, you know, I, I learned uh, a long time ago is the natural resources values of these things and the opportunities here. Actually learned with your city attorney at Bejore High School when we were about fifteen or sixteen, had environmental science and marine biology classes together there. I don't know if she's told you that or not. But um, one of the things that um, you know, through my career with the, the county in developing some of the preserves out there that were focused on juvenile fish habitat that really excited me about this one is its position on the landscape, has that opportunity to be able to create that juvenile fish habitat, which is a limiting factor for these important game fish that so many people come to this area to come catch. Um, this is also in a core forage area for wood stork, which the only rookery in our area is just north at the confluence of the Braden River and Manatee River. That's a federally threatened species and this is an opportunity to help that one out. That's another rare one to do. Um, again, and just, you know, preservation of green space, we're, we're running out of opportunities, this is a great place to do that. Um, and I think just the one last thing I'll, I'll leave on this is that through all these negotiations and everything else, we, we all need to find a way to keep the orange ice cream in play and have that. So, thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it. Um, I don't have any other citizen comment, but I, I'm just gonna, we don't comment till after everyone talks, but once again, we're gonna work with our partners in the county to make uh, opportunity come as, as they work through it. And I know Charlie will keep this on the front burner as, as hot as it can burn and, and get going forward as quick as it can. But you know, they have to go through the due diligence and all of that and we'll be, we'll be good stewards of following and working with the county to do that. And uh, because you know, it is in the county, even though it's connected to the city and the county has the parks departments to, to manage that. The city of Bradenton doesn't have a parks department, you know, like GT Bray is a great partnership. It's in the city, but the county manages it. So that's what I would look forward to working through this as we go forward and being a great steward and partner with the county as they, they do their due diligence and go through things. So, Mr. Perry, did you have any comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright, anyone else?
I do.
Okay. Mrs. Coachman? I heard that first and saw that, so.
[laughing].
Ms. Coachman?
Thank you. Um, just in reference to the presentation about the possibilities of the Mixon property, uh, again, I will say that it is, it's quite interesting. Um, and we definitely need to be in the mindset of doing as much as we can to protect what we have naturally and at the same time do some things that'll um, benefit the community. So this is interesting and, and I'm anxious to hear more. Um, may I then also comment about um, Citizen Sanders, speaking of the CRA funding and so forth. Um, I, one thing I can remember, you were saying that, you know, some of that funding could be used to purchase this. I believe then it would definitely have to be funds placed in the city uh, coffers because that would not be CRA um, area, you know, on the other side of Twenty-seventh. But also do know that I don't, I can't say for Councilman Kramer because we aren't allowed to talk, but I can say that I have spoken with our city administrator about concerns about CRA money and, and, and city money. And I personally would like to see the CRA and the city work more in tandem, but not one control the other or anything of that nature. So do know that we are aware and we are having those conversations.
Alright, Ms. Barnaby and then Mr. Kramer.
Thank you, I, I feel like I need to explain the I Love Lucy comment. Um, several years ago, uh, Manatee Educational Television was doing a program and somehow it came up that we did basically, if you remember, the I Love Lucy show with the candy factory where the candy was going by. We basically did it, it was myself and a young lady from Kaiser College and it was done with oranges and trying to pack the oranges as quickly as we could. And it was a lot of fun. You had a, a lady that had worked there for many, many years and she was perfect as the role of the supervisor that was like, start it up. She was, she was pretty funny. I still have a photo of that and I'm thinking that somewhere back in the archives of M E TV, they may actually have that. So we need to see if we could get you a copy of that. But that's what it was about was, I, it was using comedy to showcase some of the wonderful businesses that we had in Manatee County.
Great. Mr. Kramer?
Uh, just to follow up on Mrs. Coachman's last comment, Mr. Perry or Mr. Williams, can you address Mr. Sanders?
Sure, just, just briefly, I could take a stab at that when we have had those conversations. So i- if you look basically at the memo itself, this, this resolution does two things. First thing it does is the most important thing, in my opinion, which is it cleans up the accounting. The accounting was recommended as it's written in the documentations, if it was carefully read, that is recommendation of the city auditors to adhere to standard accounting principles and that the funds be segregated appropriately and, and transferred appropriately. Um, that was brought to our attention by the city auditors and Ms. Guth basically, who does a lot of our accounting and Heidi, um, the accounting manager, working with our external auditors, recommended that that be changed. Additionally, there's about four different items in there that fund CRA projects and that is basically the downtown uh, maintenance employees, which of course is in a CRA. And everyone knows what it's looked like downtown. There's homeless issues down there. Yesterday, we had defecation in an alley, rather disgusting.
For the fourth time.
But yeah, for the fourth time, made the call to the team, they had it cleaned up within about a half hour. I get the photograph. Um, homeless issues, other types of homeless issues as well. So it's not a clean and clean team or whatever i- it was mentioned as or referenced as entirely of itself. Um, we also have two vehicles that were purchased um, for CRA officers that of course bring uh, the law enforcement um, and order to, to different areas in the CRAs. Um, there's the forever lawn and the camera project uh, along the Riverwalk, Rossi Park in particular, most of us have been through the upgrades to Rossi Park. There were change orders associated with it, I believe the initial estimate was about two hundred and seventy-five thousand, I don't know what the change order was, but it was significant um, because we had to do additional improvements over there. Things like boulders had to be put in place so that we didn't have, I don't know, wayward youth doing burnouts on our new forever lawn, ruining the three hundred thousand dollars. We thought that was a good investment to make um, other types of improvements to the landscape, the vegetation, uh, protection thereof and the like. And also the camera project, which is broadband connectivity for surveillance, uh, closed circuit television that I won't get into more detail what it does. It's for security and police enforcement. That's, that's what this is. No, there's, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Moore?
Yes, ma'am.
I was actually gonna point out that this also was at the request of the city auditor, so thank you for that clarification. And regarding the Mixons, I just wanted to thank them for their patience. Um, as we know now, it's gonna take approximately eighteen months to do the due diligence that's necessary and so I, I think that, I'm appreciative of that. Um, and I think it's an exciting opportunity, I just wanted to reiterate that. I think it sounds like we have, you know, a unified support for doing the due diligence and I think it's a, I would just clarify, it's a little more complicated than a purchase and, and a one meeting vote, but that it seems like we're all on the same page and we're moving forward in that process. And so thank you for your patience and I'm excited to see what Mr. Hunsticker and Ms. Worth will, will bring forward.
Thank you. And I think it's important as the citizens listen to what happens at our meetings and goes through, that it's important that this board individually meets with Mr. Perry over the entire agenda and has the opportunity to question anything on it before, which wasn't happening with some council members in the past, which because it was more about throwing bombs and, and destroying instead of trying to build up and make better. And one of the things that we're going to do here is continue to follow what the professionals say with the audits and the different things to make sure we're doing it right. And also, when you talk about the downtown is good and it's done with, well, if you don't maintain your downtown, then it's gonna go back to what it is. So it's important to continue the funding to continue to grow the city as well as maintain the city. So I think it's important as we look forward is to get all the facts out there, get the truth out there and then process through. And as you know, if you call any of the individuals on this dais, you get an answer and you get a, you, you, you know, I've said it all along, you email me, you're gonna get an email back and we're gonna talk. We're not gonna do it. So, and I know that's true with all the council members do because a lot of them, their phones are answered twenty-four seven. So, we appreciate all of the engagement and comments, but now we're gonna move on to consent agenda. So Chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Alright, is it a second? Okay, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward four.
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
And three?
Yes.
Alright, approved unanimously, thank you. Moving forward, Madam Clerk?
Next, we have new business by department heads. We have city administration, visioning consulting services, scope of work.
Mr. Perry?
Eric Council, Rob Perry, City Administrator, Robin Singer. Um, will give the presentation, I just wanted to give some introductory remarks to the visioning uh, uh, discussion. And that discussion has basically been going on for several years, at least since I've been here, about trying to take uh, a, a deeper look at the change and the growth to the city. Um, I, I guess visioning, I've always said and say it at our meetings Monday morning with, with planning team, it's an ambiguous and somewhat vague, vague word that's sometimes misunderstood and I, I don't know if there isn't a consensus of understanding, but um, I think it's important to, to note like what it isn't. And, and what it isn't, it is, is not the strategic plan that's going to look at needs, core needs of the city as it relates to infrastructure for utilities and underground and, and transportation and, and police and fire protection and the like. It may touch on those things for sure, but it's not the same thing as a strategic plan. Um, it, it, it's also not going to address the overall transportation plans, that'll be an individual type of initiative. Um, and, and a whole host of other types of components. But what it is, and I think it's important, is it, it, it's an opportunity to go to the public and, and the community and try to ask the community for some feedback on what they see, the current status, the past and, and the future forward for the city of Bradenton. Bradenton's a very unique city in my, you know, I, I really appreciate how unique it is and I think each and every day I, I learn it's more unique to the extent of we have, you know, West Bradenton that's more traditional and, and earlier developed. We have the east side and, you know, the, the roadways out there on State Route sixty-four, triple lane, it goes to an interstate that can connect you with a whole host of different cities along the Southwest Florida corridor. Um, and, and the, 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 the shops and the commercial developments are certainly newer and that type of thing. And uh, then we have the downtown, which is, is changing significantly, the density is increasing significantly, that will have impacts. We have the traffic that's associated with it. And then we have, you know, southern parts of the city along its jagged territorial borders that has been traditional, that in a lot of cases serves changing populations of different demographics, but it has historical roots to Tropicana and a host of other industries and developments and communities that have been here and the changing nature of that. So we thought that it's important to basically utilize the expertise of, of some experts that work in this area and to try to develop some visioning. And, and we want them to talk to everybody. You know, it wouldn't be fair to just talk to the west side of Bradenton and talk to the east side, the south side or the downtown, but try to bring that together. And one of the interesting things that is we look at downtown by design, which was a problem with an unactivated, perhaps underutilized downtown corridor and what it would look like in the future. That was done back in, I think it was oh, oh eight, oh nine, um, that originally started. And it set forth a fairly good roadmap. So combining this piece of visioning, which is community related, and, and I want Robin to talk about that, with these other types of things that we should be doing like strategic plans and the like, gives us some insight in how to approach a fifty-year, forty-year, twenty-year, ten-year, two-year plan. And, and there'll be a divergence of opinion, there's no doubt about that. And it will affect things that you all have to deal with, like land use. And do we have too much multifamily and less permanent housing, single-family permanent housing and densities where they should be and where they shouldn't be? So I think it'll be really helpful as a tool. Will it be the end all? Absolutely not. But I hope it's not something that sits up on a shelf. I hope that it's kind of a guiding principle at some level to how we do things. And with that, I'll turn it over to Robin, who's the technical expert.
Good morning.
Good morning. Robin Singer, um, Planning Committee Development Director. So we had discussed visioning some time ago and how that process would look. Uh, and what this RFP is about is uh, bringing in a facilitator with the skills and staff to run public meetings and then follow that up with a community-wide survey. And so really, this is about getting the opinions of your residents, your business owners, your nonprofits on what they, how they see the city uh, developing, how the, how they see services being provided. Um, and really, it's from their perspective. We're trying to glean um, their opinions and their perspective on, on how the city is uh, redeveloped and developed um, as it moves along. Um, what we had discussed was within season, having two meetings in each ward, one daytime, one evening, and then two meetings with the business community and two meetings with the nonprofit community. Uh, and they would come back to us with report, uh, a, a summary report of those meetings and then go forward from that to a citywide survey. And the advantage to the survey is it can reach more people and it can be done at any time of year. Um, so if somebody is up north in the summer, they still can go online and respond to the survey and we can get the results of that and then there would be a final report. Now that final report, it's not, it doesn't necessarily in and of itself change, for example, our comprehensive plan, but can help inform changes to our comprehensive plan. It's not a requirement of the comprehensive plan, but I certainly think it's helpful for us understanding how the different neighborhoods are, are thinking, uh, what their desires are for how the city moves forward. Um, and so I think it's a valuable exercise for us to kind of inform our other processes and as we move forward. So um, with that, we're uh, hoping to put it out for a facilitator, um, somebody who's got a good amount of experience in this uh, kind of work. Um, and, and particularly the surveying um, aspects of it as well as the public input. How do you bring people out? How do you synthesize that, um, those opinions that you receive? Um, so.
Don't keep going.
No?
I wanna say one other thing because I did get asked it.
Okay.
Yeah, I gotta. I got to ask, I got to ask the question in some of our meetings when it was on the agenda, which is, will council have a say in how the questions are asked and who they're asked of and when they're asked and the like? I think this is something we probably do want to workshop.
Right.
And so, that would be the appropriate time. But we want to get started with the RFP, that's all I want to say.
Yeah, I, we anticipated that they would meet individually with city council members, but I certainly think following that up with a public workshop so that there's some, you know, summary of opinions that can be included and the direction that you want this to take. We don't want it to just be meeting after meeting about recycling. You know, we want to take another directions. We have enough of those. But, you know, those kind of issues that you hear about traffic, recycling, you know, maybe provisions in parks and services, those kind of things are, they're going to come up again as part of this process. But we also want to work with you all to figure out what other kinds of questions do you want answered as part of the process, so...
Thank you. Any questions right now, or just? All right. Thank you.
Do you have a? I can't tell. Well, my question was, hang on a minute. Well, no, my question was...
Mayor, next to me.
Yep.
We, on our cover page, it shows that there's a suggested motion. So, I'm assuming that we want to have a motion to put this plan in motion. Is that...
Yes, ma'am.
At this time, I would move to approve the scope of work for the visioning consultant service to go out in an RFP.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Ms. Barnaby, second by Ms. Coachman, and we've had kind of discussion. Anything else, questions, or?
I'll just comment to say that I'm excited, because I do think that it's, while it's not the strategic planning that I'm really excited about, it's an important aspect of it. I appreciate that you made sure to include that. It came in more than just English. I think that's an important part. And to Mr. Perry's point, all aspects of the city are different. I learned that when I was knocking on doors. I know the east, the northeast side very well, but all the pockets have their own important issues, so I'm excited to get going with it.
And I would like to add to that, because I've had that conversation with the city administrator. It is so important to get those pockets of people that have not been heard. And it's not necessarily a fault of the city, because we do our best in terms of, you know, sending out mailers and saying, hey, we want to, you know, want to hear what you have to say, we want to meet here. But there are still people that you just kind of almost have to go and knock on their door and get their input, and the fact that it's not just in English. I am a little concerned, and I think maybe we should do a little more research. Having a Creo, you know, interpretation as well may be more important than we think, even though most people from Haiti or the like that speak that language, they tend to learn English quickly when they come, but there is still a pocket of people in the city of Bradenton that should be heard.
Thank you.
Mayor, on that point, some of the things that Councilwoman Coachman and Gonzalez-Morton just spoke about, they were referenced by everyone. It was nice to hear that everyone that I talked to about this was very inclusive and recognizing that the world didn't exist just in their ward, or, and, you know, Councilman Kramer, that represents the city in his police functions, knows the diversity of the city as well as anybody. And it was good to hear. And so, those are the kinds of things that help Robin and I, as your professionals, try to include in there as a matter of policy and make sure we're reaching out to the right folks and getting good feedback. And I've had some really good discussions with some of the councils that work in the more diverse communities about things like the Creo presence of different demographics that would speak that particular language and the like. And so, you know, some of, we want to make sure that when we get with our facilitator, that our communications channels are broad and effective.
Right. And that's a good point, where that, and also effective, but also felt like they're going to be heard, and that's what's important to all of us up here, so. All right, thank you. We'll start the vote in Ward five.
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
And four?
Yes.
Carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Perry?
Mayor, the next council. Next matter under new business is going to be a presentation. And Julie Santa Maria has been our financial advisor for quite a time, formerly with RBC, which is Royal Bank of Canada. And they are a nationally well-known, preeminent, among others, financial services. They provide financial advice consultation to local governments. We'd use them in my former jurisdiction as well. And Julie and I had met several times prior to this particular presentation, and we've met on this presentation. She's since moved on to a different firm that she'll introduce herself, her background and qualifications, but I think it's important to understand that she has a very deep historical knowledge in dealing with the city. Mr. Williams himself has been working closely with her, and he has developed a lot of this himself. Kudos and credits to him and his team. And with that, I will turn it over to Julie and Lance.
Thank you. Welcome.
I think it's very interesting.
Excuse me. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Lance Williams, the City Finance Director. We do have the pleasure today to have Julie Santa Maria. She's worked with the city for over 20 years. The goal today is really just to kind of introduce Julie to the council and the mayor himself, even though she's been here for 20 years. Obviously, we've had a changeover, and the city isn't financing things on a consistent basis. So, we were able to, you know, to talk with Julie, kind of share some of the visions that we've had for a lot of our capital projects that are going on. And so, what this simply is, is again, it's an introduction, really just a demonstration of, we got to start thinking, how are we going to start paying for these things, you know, at some point? You know, deciding, you know, we make that decision to sell, not to sell, move, not to move, the finance question has to come in. Do we finance, do we pay for it? So, all we're doing today, again, is just a quick introduction. Julie put together a great presentation to kind of show you where we are, what our kind of outlook looks like, and some possible options. Again, nothing actionable today, simply demonstrative. So, I will fire this up for Julie.
I'm going to get my pen back and make one qualifying statement, that the information that Julie's been working with is all estimates, approximations, nothing's written in stone. I'd hate to see some, I don't know, social media sites start saying, this is the way it's going to be, because we don't know what the way it's going to be. But the information contained here will be very informative as far as the financial condition, our financial capacities, what our lending potentials look like and the like. But let me reemphasize that there is no decision that's made or proposed at this time, other than some maybe baseline, have to start somewhere, estimates.
All right. Thank you.
All right, Julie, I will turn it over to you. Trade your place.
Great. Thank you so much. Good morning.
Good morning.
So, we're pleased to provide an overview of the city's outstanding debt and the potential new financing for capital projects. Again, as Mr. Perry said, this is very general and just an example of what the city could do. There's many options as you move forward with the considerations of the development of the property, and this is just an example. The city has a very strong financial position with ratings among those in the highest category. The reserve levels are very strong and are credit positive viewed by the rating agencies. The city has a low amount of outstanding debt and significant cash-funded capital projects in the past. And the prudent debt financing of new capital improvements spread over time, as opposed to cash funding all of it, helps to spread the cost over future users of those capital improvements. And here's just a summary of the city's debt. Governmental activities, just under 28 million. Business-type activities, which are wastewater and stormwater, are just under 15 million, so a total of 42.6 million. And this just shows, provides some context of where the city's current ratings are in the investment-grade category. And investment grade means the triple B and higher. There are ratings below that, but very few governments fall in those categories based on strong revenues and the conservative management. So, you see here on your general obligation equivalent, because you don't have any general obligation debt outstanding currently, but equivalent is just under that AAA category. And then the second, the middle group of ratings is the covenant to budget inappropriate. That is all non-ad valorem revenues, and sometimes those can be, those ratings can be a little bit lower than the general obligation equivalent, but still very high. And then the last group that we're showing here, that you have a publicly offered debt, is secured by tourist development tax and sales tax revenues, and those are always a little bit lower than your overall issuer rating because of the volatility and economic The city's ratings have been steadily improving. For example, Fitch recently upgraded the city's rating in 2022. And part of the sightings that they found were the high financial resilience, solid revenue growth prospects, expected to trend above inflation, significant revenue raising capacity if needed under the 10 mil cap, flexibility given the legal control over employee wages and benefits, and moderate fixed carrying costs as evidenced by your low outstanding debt and conservative budget management practices. This is just a summary of the general governmental debt. You currently don't have any refinancing opportunities based on the call provisions, but your overall debt is very low. The interest rates are very low. And this has a lot of numbers, but it just shows your annual debt service. If you look over on the far-right column, it shows that you have about 2.3, or, excuse me, 2.9 million in annual debt service, and that drops down as some of that existing debt is paid off over time, which allows you the opportunity to layer in the new debt service without overly affecting the existing budget. This slide provides a summary of your outstanding wastewater and stormwater debt. Again, very low amount. And to date, you have utilized the state revolving fund, which is an extremely low-cost interest rate. It is subsidized by the federal government and the state government. So, you see here, those rates are sometime, at some points, under 1%. And so, it's wonderful that the city has been very proactive in using that program to keep the costs low for the utility users. Going to skip through to the capital projects, since we're focusing on the general governmental side. And again, this is an example of some of the capital projects that are under consideration, the City Hall Public Works Administration Building, police station, fire station, public safety operations center. And based on what's currently known, it's estimated that those costs are around $61 million. An example source of funds to pay for those would be the currently budgeted city funds in fiscal year 2023, which are 7.5 million, which have already been approved by you. A potential sale of the City Hall property, and that's an example number of 14 million. State funding of 1.4 million. Potential use of reserves, around 13 million. And an example bond financing for 25 million. And based on this illustration, so you have a total of 61 million in projects, and in this example, only 40% of that would be funded by debt, given your strong reserves and ability to utilize other funds. So, to just overview of the potential new debt, you could utilize a level debt service structure and going out 30 years, or there's the ability to wrap around the existing governmental debt that is phasing off as your existing debt matures. And those are both common structures that are utilized by local governments. It helps to spread the costs of the new facilities over future users. And based on current market conditions, the financing would range from 4.2% to 4.4%. And this graphic just illustrates the two different types of debt structure that we talked about. The blue line is the level annual debt service based on the 25 million example by itself. And the gray line shows how the debt service, the principal, is deferred a bit to allow for a total overall more level debt, looking holistically at your total debt. This numbers, these numbers are just provided as a backup. We don't need to go through them. But just to touch on current market conditions, the dark blue line here shows where rates, where our rates are currently. The lighter blue line shows where rates were a year ago, and I'm talking about the group of the bar chart that's on the left. That's the AAA municipal curve, which is what the tax-exempt interest rates are priced off of. And then those gold bars show the range of interest rates over the past 10 years. So, you can see while there's been a lot of talk about rising interest rates, and in that dark blue line, you see in the earlier years how they've gone up dramatically, because the Federal Reserve has increased short-term rates and trying to reduce inflation. But overall, we're still in the mid-range of where interest rates have been over the past 10 years. We anticipate that rates will be coming down over the next year or so, and it's, you have the luxury of time, given that variety of funding sources, where if you decide to move forward with projects, you could consider utilizing your reserves first if it's, if the interest rates begin to trend down and wait till we're in a lower interest rate environment to borrow, depending on the timing of the spending. And that is it.
Any questions, comments?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you verify one more time? Thank you. The debt, the difference between the level debt and the wrapped?
Sure. If I can get it back here. Oops. It's, your help. Okay, that's this, yes, this one. So, the, the level debt service on just the 20, an example, 25 million alone, that annual debt service would be about 1.5 million a year from year one to year 30. The wrapped debt service provides reduced interest only in, say, the first 15 years or so, so that the debt would be approximately 1.2 million a year. So, that frees up about $400,000 a year or so for additional projects during that period of time. And then, the principal is deferred to the latter part, so that we are looking at not just level debt on an issue-by-issue basis, but looking at all of your debt payments that affect your general fund and your budgeting. So, that helps to smooth out the total payments over time.
Well, thank you very much. Great presentation. Mr. Perry?
Couple of questions. Could you help counsel a little bit and talk about debt coverage ratios and things like that, and where you think we stand as it relates to our revenues and expenses and debt service?
Sure. The, the, your debt is very, very low. You have low outstanding debt. I don't have those coverage numbers here, but I can provide those. I know that they are in the audit, in the statistical section, but the coverage is very, very strong.
Right. And if we could go back a couple of slides, Lance?
Mr. Perry, can you pull your...
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Yep. I wanted to look at the debt itself, just so that, I guess, the outstanding debt, government activities is what I'm looking for. It's going to be about three slides back. It's actually on page number six.
It's going to be about three slides back. It's actually on page number six. Is that the slide you're looking? One more, one more back. There you go. So when you look, see this general government debt on the books, and it reflects itself on our balance sheet. And that reflects itself in our finance, it's a financial statement that reflects itself in our ACR, which is the former CAFR. They're called long-term liabilities. And it shows what debt you have that's extended over one year, more than one year. That's what a long-term liability is. These particular provisions in there are the projects that the council has done over the last, yeah, probably fifteen years or so, fifteen, twenty years. And the special obligation refunding bond for series twenty, twelve, I believe that's the Riverwalk one.
That one is McKetchen Field.
Oh, that, oh, those are the upgrades to McKetchen Field. Yeah, okay.
And one point there to make is that that debt service is paid primarily by the county. You're receiving four hundred thousand a year.
I was going to say, we got a four hundred thousand dollar pass-through that actually comes, the revenue source is the TDC tax, the tourist development tax. So they basically collected the county, pay it to us, and we pay the, the bond holders. Yep. The special obligation revenue bond series two thousand and sixteen, what is that composed of?
That one may be the Riverwalk.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then the last one, the Florida Municipal Loan Council Revenue Bond that goes through League of Cities. The loan council is the League of Cities Consolidated Program. They kind of put packages together. That's going to be for the parking garage. Yep, that was recently built. Lance, you want to talk about the, the fourteen two eight? I, I have it all up my wall. I should know it off the top of my head, but unfortunately not this morning.
Fourteen two eight, so the series two thousand and sixteen bond is actually for the spring training facility.
That was a refinance of improvements that were made out on the Pirate City.
Pirate City, correct.
Yeah, right. That's, th- those are the larger term, general operations debt that we have at the city. The other things like the judicial parking garage, that is under, I think, a bank loan, a note.
Yes.
Yes.
Not as a debt issuance. And that comes off in two years, next year, there.
Comes off, yeah, December two thousand and twenty-four.
Right.
The very last one on that line.
Right, Promissory No Judicial Parking Center. Right, so that'll come off entirely. Right. And, and then obviously it has community redevelopment debt as well under there. And it, it's important to, to kind of think about it in a bifurcated manner, which is our enterprises, which consist of the stormwater, water, sewer, and golf, are enterprise funds. And so they're business activities. That's the way they're referred to in this analysis, and they're differently referred to on our financial statements. Though the lending associated with that and how we proposed forty-eight, up to forty-eight million dollars to redo the entire collection, treatment, and injection future, that's a different animal because it's done off a business enterprise. And that business enterprise generates about thirty million dollars a year in revenue. It has an operating cost, it pays debt service, and then it has a certain amount that's associated with it that goes into other funds. This is more what we call general fund, what you all would refer to. And I think it's important to look at it to realize that over time, it comes off our books. And there's ways to, as Counselor asked, Miss St. Mary, wrap it so that the front end, while it's still on the books, you're paying interest only. And then the back end, when the principal comes off the book, you're heavy paying principal. That's the way that works. But comparatively, if you look at bond programs of local governments, pay as you go. Sure, that's the way we've done it. Sucked away money for reserves for the purposes of capital spending, I'm assuming. Since we're not in the capital businesses, we're not looking for another business line to get into. You know, we got to provide core services here at the city. And it, they have to be really prudent and measured and leveraged in how we do that. But our reserves are healthy because we've been saving up for capital expenditures. And I think that it's important to have a policy thought about, is it appropriate for the local government to save forever and not spend? Or there comes a time to spend? And if there comes a time to spend, what should we spend on? We're not talking about water parks and crazy things here. We're talking about core infrastructure. City Hall, fire stations, police stations, emergency management. If there isn't something that, that the government should do, local governments, it's probably not that, because that's the core business of it. And if we don't do it, we're going to have to repair, replace, and ultimately be caught behind the eight ball. That's just on the general fund side. So that, those are some of the policies and the finance issues. I thought it was really helpful as we embark upon discussions about redevelopment here in town, downtown, utility redevelopment, CRA redevelopment, for you all to start familiarizing yourself with the financial condition. Not at the highest level of sophistication, but at a basic level of where are we and what is it we're doing and how would we do it? And hence, I think this presentation is helpful and probably one of several that'll come up.
I think you stated a couple of things, Mr. Perry, as.
I always do.
In goo- in a good way. Where you're talking about kind of looking at it at ten thousand feet, but understanding it where we are. Because as you do have it written all over your boards, and, and you and I have talked about it, and the draw on the chalkboard and then, or the whiteboard, and then erase it and do it again and all that. But the opportunity in some of this debt service here, a lot of times in a government, is you just have to get debt service with no additional income. We're in a position to create additional income by creating some of this debt service that is exponentially a lot because of a development that we could have. And that is something that, you know, I don't even think those factors are coming into the numbers when you just look at the dollars of what we're going to spend. When all of a sudden, you're going to economically impact by hundreds of millions of dollars and then additional ad valorem that wouldn't be there, while still creating an atmosphere that I think will be positive for our community. And, you know, there's going to be people with other opinions, but when you have an opportunity to develop and engage an opportunity to help pay some of that debt even maybe sooner, or make your numbers better because at the moment, and that's not even factored in to the overall.
It is not. And we had that conversation, Lance and I, this morning, and Lance had it with Julie last night, from what I heard on the phone. And of course, we've done a fiscal impact statement. They're estimates, there's no doubt. But that doesn't factor in the new revenue sources of ad valorem, of franchise, of other revenues and the like that could be used to help the debt service as well as other aspects of city redevelopment.
Right. And, and we've talked about it. It does go to the whole city. You know, even though you're developing one area, it's also going to give opportunity to enhance all five wards, which is very important to continue to look at that. And that's what I think the visioning part of it will really show. When you have not just one group for or against something, you have what the city wants and the visioning part of that. Because that, you know, you mentioned different things, but, but it will be huge to our CRA and impact that will help offset different numbers in debt service. So.
Yes.
We appreciate it, and I think it's a good update. Yes, Ms. Moore?
I appreciate the clarification that some of these are related to projects that have income that offsets that. And I know that this is just a snapshot and introduction, so absolutely no pressure, and we can, you know, subsequent workshop or whatnot, go deeper. Those, those capital improvement projects that you listed in this, does the current Public Works undertaking that we're about to embark on, is that part of this? How does that factor into what we're potentially talking about doing?
I think I can take a stub at that. There was a section in there that had a dedicated seven and a half million dollars. And that was a prior appropriation transfer that would fund Fire Station Two out of New Ward. And, and also, I think, three and a half million of the seven million was dedicated to public works. However, at this point in time, we're looking at consolidating public works within the City Hall building.
Okay.
Hope that answers it.
I think it does.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
All right. I don't, you have some unfinished business, Mr. Perry?
I do have one more matter of unfinished business. So I should have probably done this on the presentations, but I thought on the new business would be the right place. And I wanted to basically just call out a couple of folks that, maybe I should wait for Counselor to call her to get back.
Let me ask you a quick question before you go to that.
Yep.
Just, and I know we didn't talk about it, but just maybe give us a quick little legislative snapshot of where we're at?
Sure. Where we're at is the governor received the legislative budget and the capital section, which is included, that we're particularly interested in because we have several significant capital funds that were appropriated through direct appropriations for capital spending. I believe there was one point four million for the PSOC out on.
Explain what the PSOC is.
So the, the PSOC basically is the city's Public Safety Operations Center for Emergency Management. It's a forward operating position that is closer to our coastal high hazard areas, being our bays, the Gulf of Mexico and the river. It's along the highest ground in the city. It's also closest to a lot of key strategic facilities. Blake Hospital, GT Bray Park, and the capacity out there to do large-scale staging and recovery operations. Examples of that would be staging eighty or a hundred tanker trucks for fueling and the like, construction debris removal, helicopter aerial support landing zones, all, all the staging that's associated with bringing in FEMA temporary housing and everything else. GT Bray is a great open area to do that. It's also next to our Fire Station Three. It's also next to the County Utilities Facility down on Sixty-S sixth. It's not next to, but, but within probably a mile. And the facility itself, most folks know the history, was the Old Red Cross Building. We used it as temporary fire station. And with the, the blessing and the forethought from council, we were able to do some architecture and engineering to look at how we could outfit that building to be a forward operating platform. Generally speaking, the emergencies are handled through the federal, state, and then county EOC plans. But part of those plans are the first-in teams. And that's probably the first people to touch recovery when you think about it. And so that's why we thought we have, we want to have our own capacity to do that and to somewhat help our neighbors. The perspective of taking this to the legislature was also regionalism at that level. And so the architects basically outfitted the facility with the necessary programmatic components to operate a forward operating platform that could do the, the, the preparation, the rescue, and the recovery efforts to a major type of event, mostly weather-related, but would support, could support other events too. So that's one point four million. The other million we received was through the, was a direct appropriation for the million dollars for a collaborative to develop a city park concept down on Ninth Street. I've talked to councils about that. I've discussed it from the DICE and presentations and in different presentations throughout the city. That is a collaborative. We're still requesting federal funding on that. We've been working with the county. The mayor and I, and thank you, sir, have paid some visits to all five county commissions. We have received very significant and positive response with significant contributions to that collaborative effort. And, and the school district will be talking too as well. So we have federal, state, local governments. Bradenton, Manatee County, City Park does the four different functions. It basically will provide outreach to the community because it can serve also, like the Dream Center out on Twenty-S sixth, I think. And, and it have youth sports, but there's more than just youth sports going on. They have this community activities and, and connectivity and positive kind of reinforcements of after-school programs and career enhancements. And we would probably ask the school district to pay for some buildings on there, multipurpose buildings to provide those kinds of programs. So your reach and your run to serve community, you know, better to have these young people in those places having a safe place to learn positive things than to be engaging in the knife and gun club of Bradenton. You know, you don't want them in bad, negative things that, that go on out there that we all know are challenges in today's world. I don't mean to be cute or, or facetious or sarcastic about it, but when I was young, when many, many of us were young, there was good, safe places to go. And I'm not so sure there's less of them as far as options go. So we got that. We also have the sports tourism issue out there that could really use our, our hallmark facility of Lecon Park and the practice field and, and build a third field and ultimately turn it into a, a collaboration with AT Bray, with IMG, with other surrounding places that could accommodate large-scale sports baseball-type tournaments that could generate a lot of economic activity and revenue. Theoretically, when you build these places, they also need hotels and restaurants and the like, so it spurs additional economic activities. Up in South Bend, you know, the football stadium across the way is a place called Eddie Commons. And it was a similar kind of long time, not neglected, but not improved either area. And they land bank that, and then Eddie Commons is one of the coolest, most active places that spurs economic activity for the city of South Bend and the city of Notre Dame. So that's, has additional benefit. The connectivity for downtown on the Ninth Street corridor. Not a lot has been done there over the last twenty years. A lot of same businesses are the same businesses, and they're even in legacy types of activities. You know, car repair is car repair, but car repair is all electronic now and everything else. And so, you know, streetscape, active improvement of economics, active improvement of youth programs, active improvement of residential neighborhoods for everybody, for everybody.
And I think that, just not to jump in, but also active improvement of Village of the Arts, which has done a great job over the twenty-five years, but it's waiting for what's next. And that is an opportunity to engage a huge portion of our community.
Well, you've done this spiel with me, so you stole the thunder on the last point, which is connectivity with, oh, no, it's, it's an excellent point. The connectivity with Village of the Arts, Fourteenth Street, you know, Tim Ami Trail Corridor, ultimately downtown nine blocks away.
And we're doing an MPO study right now of the Ninth Street corridor.
Right.
And, and really a lot of moving parts.
Lot of moving parts.
That, that, you know, through you and your administration and your staff that are doing a great job to continue to not be that beginning Eddie Commons, if you'd say, where it sat for a long time. We've sat, now what can we get done and, and make that generational change?
Yeah.
And, and that's why I appreciate it. Obviously, we've got to keep our fingers crossed, and the governor hopefully will sign the budget sooner than later.
Right. We also have an additional one point, I think one point three million in there for mostly public works projects of pump stations, generators, check valves, some other stuff Jim can get excited about. Yeah.
Engineering stuff.
Right.
What would you say, just a rough guesstimate, this year, if everything goes through money-wise?
Fingers crossed.
Fingers crossed.
Well, we also got two point nine million in DEP grant.
Already got.
That we already awarded. That actually is appropriated to the Department of Environmental Protection. And then competitively and equitably, I guess, it's distributed as a grant. But it ultimately comes from the Florida Legislature with approval from the executive side. You know, that's, so right now, we're at six point six million. We still have federal money and request out for another four million. And then there's some other pickup. So I think we'll probably be in the area, anywhere is from, for six point six, we'll probably get something. We'll be anywhere from probably eight to eleven million. Not bad for you and I sitting down there deciding whether to, the lobbyist two years ago. Because, and there's a lot of people that, that, that money is attributable to. Our local congressional, legislative, state congressional delegation, as well as Representative Buchanan's office. And, but, but also the governance of the city. You know, we, we recognize the importance. And, you know, I was talking with Kathy, who's Senator Jim Boyd's assistant at the Law Enforcement Memorial. And we were kind of, you know, smiling about the awards. And I was appreciating, telling her, I thank her and appreciate what she had done for us in the council and mayor. And I said, Kath, you've been with Senator now, what, twenty-seven years? She goes, yeah. And I go, have we ever gotten this much? And she said, no. And she said, you didn't ask.
And that, that's why I wanted to show how important it was to continue a relationship for the future with the lobbyist that the last two years, you know, people complain about the amount spent over time, but seventy-five thousand dollars a year
Yeah.
to get upwards of ten to eleven million.
Yeah.
If everything stays in, and even if we, you know, aren't fortunate on. If everything stays in, and even if we, you know, aren't fortunate on some, we're still in the millions. So, anyway, that was just a quick...
No, it's good. It's good to talk about that. I'm very excited and pleased and happy for y'all that we were able to... And I appreciate y'all's efforts in doing that. Many of you went up to Tallahassee and made phone calls and otherwise got engaged in the process. So it takes a bunch of people to do that, and we have good people both here and partner agencies and friends out there. And we don't have friends just to have friends. We do it because they respect us, they respect you, and they respect the way things are going here, I think, you know. Yep, I love talking to Jim Boyd. He's a wonderful person, and he's very effective at what he does. Yep. So, moving on. With that same vein, our council, our electeds, our mayor, go out and they try to learn everything they can about being good at what you all have to do. And everybody, you know, it's a citizens legislature. Everybody has different things that they do for work and for personal lives and for volunteer and nonprofit activities and a whole host of other things. But I just wanted to recognize a couple of folks that had gone out and successfully completed the Metropolitan Planning Organization Advisory Council. And back on May sixth, basically, Councilwoman Jane Coker and Mayor Gene Brown received their certificates for completing the MPO. And I think it speaks highly of your passion and your interest in professionalism and your thirst to learn more. And with everybody's business and personal life, taking a weekend, going someplace else, being away is sometimes a challenge, but everybody here does it for something else, and that's the latest. So it's my honor on behalf of the city, our staff, our citizens, to say thank you to us and to present to you our certificates.
Thank you.
Can I say something?
Sure, yes ma'am.
I appreciate the opportunity of being able to attend this. It really, it was very informative. I think that we all, and we all sit on the different boards, and the more engaged we are, I think the more we can bring back to the community from, in terms of projects. And I feel like, I was going to say in my comments, but I feel like us being really proactive on this MPO committee is... You can see, because we have to, there's a big apple, I mean, there's a big pie there that we're competing with Venice and Sarasota. And I, you know, think that Manatee County and the city of Bradenton are well-represented, and we're getting a pretty good size of that pie, and in terms of prioritizing the projects with DOT. And this education that we did helped us to know how to be prioritized as well, so.
Yeah, and I think, thank you for that. And it was an opportunity to even learn more. And I was fortunate enough last year, or last cycle, whatever it was on the MPO, to be elected as the vice chair. It rotates between Sarasota and Manatee County officials. This year, it's a Sarasota official is the chair. I'm the vice chair. So next year, I'll roll into the chair in Manatee County. And one of the things that Rob just said earlier, and talking with Kathy at Senator Boyd's office, is you didn't ask. So for a lot of years, we didn't ask, or we weren't engaged. This board, this council, is engaged now, and the opportunity is there. If we ask, maybe we're going to get something. And I think we did, you did a lot of good things in the past. And I think the past showed that we had no debt comparative to other cities. But it set us up for the future, and I've said all along, I am not for debt. But if we can pay for it, or get it, or get it from somebody else, let's try to work in that. Because it ultimately all is our own money, and that's one of the things I think we saw this morning that when the question was asked of Mr. Huntsinger, well, you know what? We're ten percent of what that fund is off the referendum. So even though the county controls the whole amount of money, it's still ten percent city of Bradenton paying into that, that conservative referendum fund. So that's where the relationships come in, and that's where these boards come in to get the relationships. So we just want to keep moving that forward. You know, I was honored to be able to go. And probably, in all of the time, this was probably the most informative about the MPO information that I got, being on that board for five years. So it is important that we're engaged, and we see that now. So thank you for that. Anything unfinished more, Mr. Perry?
It's coming up on my, it's hard to believe, but two years.
And they said it wouldn't last.
Right. I guess the season is also the season of evaluation. So I'll be sending those out and get them turned around. It seems like we just did a set, but we'll do them again. And I can just tell you that in that two years, I've worked with some excellent people that work for you. And it's not without challenges. It's not without issues, I assure you. But by and large, I would say that ninety-nine point nine percent of the people that work for us give a hundred percent. They have a passion. They want things to get better and to do systems improvements and engage in active management. And, you know, I push. It's unfortunate. Just like this city park, I told the mayor, go one more project, right? And it's not included in the capital development plan, but you know, once you run half a marathon, you go back and you go, maybe I can do a full one. And so, maybe we can do a full one, you know? And that's the next project. I'm not, we're working on the preliminary stuff for that right now. But it's a good example of what's next. And so, you know, that's kind of the way I've been trying to take it, one day at a time. And I appreciate everybody's support, and I enjoy working with you. But I really enjoy working with my staff and team and everybody in the city. Last Friday was a good example of it. You know, we did the river cleanup. We go out to try to do a little bit more each and every day, and people do cool things.
And as we know, we have you kind of, you do the evaluation of your staff. This council and mayor do the evaluation of you. So we'll get that out. We'll talk about it. Everybody will get it back to me, and then I'll go through and do a report like we did last time and keep it moving forward.
Perfect. And I'll do the same type of, it'll be more thorough than the last one you received on specific areas of performance that I've judged my staff on too, so that I'm judged on the same matrix. And I think you'll like the way we revise that to try to really make it identify places where we can improve, things we do really good, and, you know, the whole host of different evaluations. It's a good introspective perspective to get from people you work with and people you work for. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other unfinished business, we'll go to council reports, and this week it starts in four.
Okay. I applaud you all for the certificate. As one of the newer members of council, I have often joked and said, there's always something more you could be doing in the job. And so I think that that's fantastic, and I hope to follow in similar footsteps. I did have an opportunity a few months ago to meet and visit the offices of the lobbyists, and I found them to be wonderful and engaging and open to that educating component so that I could also hopefully join the ranks of effective advocacy on behalf of the city. The other couple of things I was going to mention is, since our last meeting, I had the opportunity, and I very much appreciate Chief Greer and Chief Kennedy's time. They spent, I think, about three solid hours with me, letting me tour all of the current fire stations and just educating me a little bit about, you know, a day in the life of a fire department chief. So I appreciate that, and I think it was really such a wonderful learning opportunity as well as information that I'll be able to bring into our conversation as we move forward with planning for our next fire station. I also met with a couple of business owners that are operating businesses in what I call East Bradenton, but basically just east of Manatee Memorial, along the Riverwalk Extension. I'm very excited about their enthusiasm for building up those businesses in that area. And I'll just raise in this moment of us being allowed to talk about it that it spans both four and five, so we have very similar interests in wanting to make that area and those businesses thrive. So I was excited about their passion, and I hope to be helpful to them as well as Councilwoman Coachman.
Thank you.
And I'm...
Ms. Coachman.
They have reached out to me. I haven't had the opportunity yet to schedule. I said to them that it's nearing the end of school, and right now I am... So, you know, and just also to applaud the mayor and Vice Mayor Coker in achieving that. I, when I have the time, it's either summer break or winter break, and that's when everybody's in vacation mode. So I look forward to having more time to be able to build my understanding and education as well in what we do and what our staff and all the people that are making this city the friendly city, the working city, the beautiful city, the city. Mr. Perry, you referred to them giving one hundred percent. I feel they give more. They give more, and probably we could even afford to build our staff a little because they have to give two hundred percent so many times because of that. But great meeting today, a lot of discussion. I guess what I'm going to take away from it is vision, and it starts from a conversation. And I feel the way this government entity right now is, I feel it would be more than just vision. I feel like we really will get some things accomplished. I hope I'm a part of it. My time is dwindling. But just the thought of the whole city coming together and making sure the different areas of the city that may not have been given the tender loving care, you know? And it wasn't necessarily that we didn't want to. We didn't ask, you know? But just having that connectivity, and it is a lot of moving parts going on right now. My head is kind of spinning. But it's just exciting. It's so exciting. And the idea of mixing, just all of the vision is, it's overtaking. It really is. So let's get to work. Let's keep working.
All right. Word one.
Yeah, okay. First off, I had the pleasure yesterday, you know, I'm a member of Kiwanis, and we have been celebrating our one hundred years here in Bradenton. And they've been a big part of making this, making it a better Bradenton. And so we gave them a big check yesterday to the county, and you kind of teed it up for me a little bit because it's going to be a very special, all-inclusive playground in that I'm hopeful that it's going to bring our whole community together with play. And it will be at Tom Bennett Park, which is not in the city, but certainly will be a huge benefit to the Bradentonians. And it's also going to help those that have disabilities have fun and help others in the community embrace the value of inclusion. So it was a very exciting thing for me yesterday. I also want to congratulate all our graduates. This is tis the season. And Dr. Seuss said it so well, "You're off to great places. Today is your day. Your mountain is waiting, so get on your way." But I think I put this in my council corner, "We really want you to come back. Bring your talents. Go off, become all you can be, but we still want you to come back to Bradenton." And also, with regard to the MPO, one of the things that we voted on this week was they're trying to align the Sun Trail, which is, you know, multimodal trail that is trying to connect from the Green Bridge all the way out to the Causeway. And they have, there's a lot more to come on this, but they've kind of come up with a route that, not on Manatee Avenue. You'll be more going through the neighborhood. So I would say there's a lot more to come on this, but at least we're moving forward. Go ahead.
So I'd also like to congratulate Vice Mayor Coker. She has been voted in as the vice chairman of that subcommittees that meet before the MPO that does a lot of that transportation and mobility studies and that. So again, another leadership role that will help Bradenton continue to be in the voice. So congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, and then just, as we're heading into this memorial holiday weekend, and we're all pulling out our grills and gathering with our family and friends, I want us always to remember that freedom is not free. And let's keep in mind and never forget those who died to get us that freedom.
Thank you. Word two, Ms. Barnaby.
That's still your thunder.
No, no, not at all. Not at all. I too would like to congratulate the mayor and vice mayor on their achievements with the MPO. I would just remind you, my time with the MPO, I felt like no good deed goes unpunished.
Oh, great.
We'll take one for the team.
Just keep that in mind. And the other thing I seem to remember, and I don't know if this is still accurate or not, but that by the time you get a project on the plan, it will be eight years before the first shovel of dirt is turned. And I don't know if that's changed or not.
It's a little different, but...
But it, that was a very bitter pill for me to swallow when I worked with the MPO. Also wanted to thank everyone for their participation in the river cleanup. I was able to go out and observe. I was not in the river. I was not participating other than to just come out and lend some, a little moral support for a while. It was amazing to me, the items that were being brought up. And I don't know if that means that as a city, we need to, and again, because of the things that the legislature has exempted us from being able to do. But if people have boats that are scuttled or sink, or they abandon, I'm not sure that every citizen should have to pay for that. I think that we ought to maybe consider and look at saying, is there anything that we can do when we have these situations where boats are just derailed and left? And as we saw, scuttled and the stuff that was coming up, it was stuff that really didn't belong in our river.
I thought it came from the hurricanes. Do you think that comes from the boats?
There was a couple sunk boats. The majority of it came from those.
So, but thank you to all of the staff and Keep Manatee Beautiful and the other individuals that were participating with it. I'm sure that they'll probably want to be looking at doing it again because of the amount that was pulled up. If I could, please get Mr. McClellan to come up. I have some information or issues that I would like to get some updates on. School is going to be out soon. Lewis Park still is not open yet. I know that we have it posted that it's still a construction site. I mean, there is still ongoing construction. But I know that there are individuals that I think are not being effective parents by telling their kids, "It's okay, go play on it." So I'm wondering, when are we going to get finished? When can we have the grand opening? When can we take the tape and everything down?
So the remaining items are to finish up the forever lawn that goes under the swing sets. The latest information I got from the contractor as of yesterday is that it should be finished next week. The sign for the overall park is to be installed next week. And so then coordinating schedules with everybody involved as far as a ribbon cutting ceremony.
But we, once the work is done and the punch list, I mean, once it's done, we can open it up and we can celebrate with the community at a later date.
Right. So I'm still on board to say that we would be by the end of next week at a point where we could probably open it the first of the next week as a soft opening.
Well, like I said, there are people that are ignoring the construction signs. I don't know if it is a safe place. I would not let my children play on something that is designated a construction site. And I've hesitated to call the police, to have the police get engaged with it. But again, I don't know that much about construction and the safety that's involved there. I, and I know, it's been a long time, and I know the weather's gotten better and people want to be out in it. But it would break my heart if a child was hurt there.
Well, the only component of the playground that is not completed is... Well, the, the only component of the playground that is not completed is the swing sets as far as the turf that's under them. They're, they are taped off. The only other thing is the WeGo swing that is in the five to 12 playground area. The three, the, the two to five year playground area is 100% complete. So I would, I would be not concerned with anybody playing inside of that playground area.
But there's still a lot of construction debris and trash in the
That was all cleaned up.
Parking lot.
That was all cleaned up.
Last time I saw.
They cleaned up Monday morning. They, they had all of their crews in to remove all of, all of the construction related debris that was left over. Contractor poured the last of the concrete, so the concrete apron coming off of First Avenue has been completed. The remainder of the concrete sidewalks within the site have been completed. So essentially the only thing that isn't complete is the underlayment for the swing set area and underneath the WeGo swing.
Well, I, I hope people will use good judgment over this weekend. That's the only thing I would say. Thirty-third Street Court West, where are we with that?
Thirty-third Street Court. We had a substantial completion walkthrough with the contractor and DOT yesterday. So the roadway has been paved. I believe the striping was completed yesterday for the, the lanes and for the bike lanes. And so we're in the process of completing out that project. And once everything is complete with the contract, we will then go in with landscaping to have the trees installed that we've been coordinating with you folks to determine what goes in there.
So are we talking two weeks? Are we talking a month?
I'm saying that the closeout of the project, and we want to have the contractor's work completed with all punch list items addressed within the next two weeks. And then we would schedule things for the landscaping to follow that.
Okay. All righty. Thank you. I appreciate that. The only other thing that I have, Mr. Mayor, is an expression of sympathy to the family of Michael Rusty Thomas on the passing of his mother. Ms. Thomas was one of those moms that was always at the PTA meeting at Ballard. I think she was the gray lady for a couple, and that, that was the lady that they had doing, you know, putting the Band-Aids on the skinned knees. I spent a lot of time in the clinic because I was pretty klutzy. So
Continue, Ms. Barnaby.
Thank you. But Ms. Thomas was always there with, with a smiling face and she was just a delight to know. So I, I, I want to express my, my family's sympathy to Rusty, who yes, was my very first boyfriend in the fifth grade. And he gave me a ring to go steady with that belonged to Davy Wyndham. And we stayed, we, for three days and then it turned my finger green and my mom said I had to give it back and Rusty said Davy wanted it back to give to another girl. Anyway, so that's how things happened at Ballard when we were growing up. And with Memorial Day coming, I want to wish everyone a safe and happy Memorial Day. Please, again, please use good judgment with what you're doing out in as far as grilling or swimming at the beach or that sort of thing. And as, as Ms., or Vice Mayor Coker said, there is many that paid the last full measure so that we could enjoy the life that we have today.
Thank you. Mr. Kramer?
Thank you. I can never be too funny or too serious after you, so I really, I really appreciate that order, Mr. Mayor. And for the record, it wasn't me today that said something about her, it was you. Congratulations again to your award. Speaking of what you were saying about eight years until some shovels go in the ground, I, I was able to make the Florida Department of Transportation public, develop, project development and environmental study meeting yesterday at the Convention Center. Yesterday was the in-person meeting where you were able to see project designs for the DeSoto Bridge. That is a project that will start in 2027. They weren't talking about capacity, it's just replacing the bridge, which is in dire need of repair. We had some other city staffers there as well. That was the live meeting. There really wasn't a lot of discussion. You could talk individually with people to, tomorrow, and I hope that we can put it out on the website, possibly. There's a link for the virtual meeting where you can ask questions and see the displays as well. I think there's also a website where you can just go look at the displays, but that's all available. But that's a very important for our community to deal with the transportation issues we face daily. Also, congratulations to the graduates. I was able to attend the St. Stevens graduation, 71 graduates at Van Waisel Saturday morning. It was a very quick, about two hours. I heard the one for Pine View the next day was going to be about six hours. So I was quite happy that I was able to get out when I did. Other than that, Memorial Day obviously is, I wasn't, I didn't serve in the military, but my father did. I, my wife has family members who, you know, they, they served, they came back, but they didn't, they were never the same. And that's, that's another sort of hidden, hidden loss. So.
Thank you. I just want to start off with, for the river cleanup, over 5,500 pounds almost were collected, so two and a half tons, which it's amazing when we looked at it because the majority of it came from around our day dock, which we had two boats sink there and we thought when we got the boats out, we got most of what was there out, but we didn't realize there was two full living quarters that actually sunk to the bottom. Batteries, generator, refrigerators. It was just, it was amazing when you start pulling them out. And I love, Mr. McClellan came perfectly prepared for it in his tie and then started reaching over and Lance came over. So we appreciated everybody being there. It, it showed that, it's been a lot of years since it's been done, but that one area within, since Ian, that's when we had the issues. So one of the things I want to thank Keep Manatee Beautiful with Jennifer, Sun Coast Aqua Ventures with Sheryl Huntsinger, that they're going to do hopefully another one because you have to get the divers. That's the important part. But the divers that were there were excited already to do it again because of what we pulled out. And we didn't even really get down the whole Riverwalk because we got stuck in that one area. And so they're excited and Mr. Perry was kind enough to let him and I ride around on the jet skis, but there was times when we would try to pull stuff, we couldn't pull it with the jet ski. And we had to really get a lot of help and, and that. But the jet skis were the, were the pulling the trash and without those, it would have been a lot less successful. So thank you for letting us use those and, and, and yes, him and my son, when they put them in the water, went faster than I went. The day we went for a little ride, but I'm like, 60 miles an hour on a jet ski was a little bit scary there at my age and I'm like, oh no. So I'm not ashamed of that, but, but it was fun. Not only the river cleanup was so great, you know, it was a little bit of fun that we had out there. The, obviously we've talked a little bit about Rossi Park, but you know, as, as the summer is in and what's on there, and I mean, people were a little bit concerned about some of the heat and that. So far the reviews, the, the kids and the families and we go out there with the way the splash pad is and everything, it's working well so far. And I think it was a, a great investment the city made and we hope we continue to that path. We've seen the forever lawn over in East Bradenton on the Glazier Gates area and we're seeing it now, we're seeing it at Lewis Park. And I think it's something that, you know, there is a cost upfront to it, but hopefully the cost in the future is a lot different, you know, and saves money. So you see two high schools in our community now. Manatee and Palmetto are getting the forever lawn on their football fields. So it is something that's coming and it will be, you know, I think a future opportunity to continue to grow how our community looks. And that's, that's an important part. Memorial Day, we have a celebration at our Don Courtney Veterans Park, which would be the first celebration with the official name. This council was kind enough through the Veteran Services to name that and it'll be unveiling of that at Monday morning at 9:00 AM with a lot of other areas, cemeteries and different things doing those celebrations because as we look in the, if we don't celebrate our past, we're going to repeat some of the things that we might not want to. So, you know, and like you said, I have a family member on that wall from Vietnam. So, you know, that, that gave that ultimate sacrifice. But for what we are free, it's, it's worth, you know, knowing that they're willing to do that. Probably the last thing or couple of things with, you know, we're going to set up some workshops, but with, you know, our June meeting, two weeks, and then we, we purposely set a break so we could do some things as, as families because everybody up here has a family and want to do it. So we're probably looking at more workshops more towards the end of July, the way that our break goes and, but, you know, but be prepared maybe to do a couple of days in a week in a workshop if we need it. So we can keep that going. And then the last thing is obviously I want to commend the staff. I know they're already working on budget and, you know, we have some discussions and I know there'll be some private discussions with council members if you have questions or going through, but then we'll also start the budget workshops and getting that information. And I think from my 10 years being involved, this is probably the most engaged council we've had, but it's also the most engaged staff that's willing to try to get information out there because that's the only way we're going to continue to be able to grow and, and go through things. So just appreciate it and all the graduates. I've got four more years before I'll have a grandson graduating, so we'll not look forward to that. But this year we had four graduates that we know. It goes in cycles when you, when yours graduate, you don't have anybody and all of a sudden four family members and kids that you know are graduating. So it's been fun going to those parties and, and seeing them from when they were two and three to now graduating and, and going through that. But congratulations to all that. And I agree, we are doing things in this city that is giving those younger kids a chance to want to come back here and be a part of what we are and who we are in our city. So thank you for that and thanks for the citizens allowing us to do that. Seeing nothing further from the council? Any department heads? Anything? Chief Gere?
I'm probably going to laugh when I get up, but no, the other half of the council Friday was over at St. Joe's Catholic for the first responders. Appreciation. So I wanted to say thank you all. You all support us in, in, in every way you can and we really appreciate it. Thanks for showing up at the fire and my guys and people really appreciate you and Rob, when you all put on your vest and come out and support public safety on scene. So, and you saw all the county partners that came in to assist and, and BPD as well and EMS. So anyways, wanted to thank you for that and just thank Keith Green. I don't know if he's here still, but you know, he, you know, he and his people did a real good presentation for us en masse. So learned a lot, didn't I?
We appreciate that. That was a nice tribute for, you know, all of the fire police and first responders. Of course, Mr. Perry and I were trying to get off the river, but when it started hitting, it was just, it was crazy.
That's not what we heard, but okay.
So Vice Mayor Coker did a great job at reading the readings.
And I just, I'm just assuming that you don't want all of us showing up on your fireside. We support you. We're there, we're, we're there in spirit.
So very quickly, those who know me well know that I don't shy away from curb alerts. One of my favorite places to shop is thrift stores and garage sales. I'm, I'm really quite okay with secondhand stuff, but every once in a while, it's nice to get what's new and shiny, particularly if it's items, devices that increase transparency could potentially save lives, not only of community members, but of officers. And with your approval of the consent agenda today and the two items that were bundled together, the Taser 10s and the Axon 4s, the Taser 10s specifically makes us the first police agency in the state of Florida to get those, the first police agencies in the state to get those. If you want to know more about them, Taser's so excited about that, they've already shown up. They're hosting a class here in about five minutes and it's going to go for about two hours. You can drop in, you can take a look at it and see the capabilities. Its goal, and I truly believe it has a lot of merit, is not to do anything other than to save lives, to provide a less lethal device that can help us mitigate and deescalate situations beyond anything that is out there in the law enforcement arena. And so I know Councilman Kramer, you know, and I had a lot of discussions about the cameras and, and this in the years passed, but I will argue that because we did go with an alter, alternative, it put us in just the right place at the right time to do something that's just great for the agency and great for the community. So with that, thank you very much. I appreciate the support and you guys are free to come by and just check it out if you want to look at it.
All right. Thank you, Chief. So Jim, can you come forward again? Two things that Vice Mayor Coker and I were sitting at Kiwanis yesterday and we had one of the Kiwanis members come up and say they had called into Public Works and didn't know who they had talked to. It was a lady, I believe he said, but just what a pleasure it was calling in and, and going through that. So if you can pass that along for us, that, you know, whoever answered the phone and doing that. And then the other was, I just, I just want to thank you for working and getting through to get our sign back up on the corner of the Main Street and City Hall property here to symbolize and celebrate, you know, the 120 years of the city birthday, but in conjunction with the Turner family, who was the first post office on that site and really started what we were and who we were as a town per se and then going through that. So thank, thank all the staff and, and do that for putting that up. And I, I know you were there and we appreciate that.
We, we actually received, I received a voice message from one of the family members expressing his gratitude for just the whole process. So, and I shared that with our staff.
Now, that was good. And I think that was, we had the great grandson and then the great, great grandson and then other family members kind of came up, cousins and different things. But, but it was just fun to see that. And this gentleman that was 88 years old, lives on 26th Street in Surrey, or a Summerfield is what it used to be called, but, but was just so proud to be here. I mean, it, it made a time in his life that, that his great grandfather was so symbolic and really what Bradenton started and is. So thank you for that.
We were glad we were able to make it hap, be part of making it happen.
Perfect. Thank you. And then also I think at that same was, was about, and he also said he called into the Planning Department, Robin, and said he had a great presentation. We always hear the bad things. We don't always hear the good things. So just tell, again, he didn't know who he talked to. He called in. Oh, not in Planning?
Yeah, he, he talked to John.
Oh, yeah. Greg. Yeah. So he talked to Greg there, but he wasn't sure in Public Works who he talked to, but, but said Greg really did a, a great job at, at, you know, helping him what he needed and where to go. So I just passed that along. And then I did get something else that was another call, just saying our phone staff is doing a good job. So that's what we want to hear and keep going. So we appreciate that and nothing else. Thank realize Bradenton. I just see Karen out there, but thank her for, and her group helping organize the 120th birthday. And there was cookies. You missed the cookies, it was your own fault, Chief Bevan. Be adjourned.[1791.36][1791.36]